Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today being July 26, 2018 at 7:00 PM. MLDA Elementary School. Start with a roll call.
My game.
Roger Moore, Jamie Lawrie.
Rich Genong.
Deborah Whitman.
Okay, we have approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the approval of minutes for May 24th and July 12th. Time for citizens' comment, an election of the secretary. We have two public hearings, Amani Acres and Arundel Conservation Trust. We have three pending applications, Amani Acres, Arundel Conservation Trust, B&amp;B Trucking, and then we have other business.
Will I make a motion we approve the agenda as written?
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anything that needs to be added or discussed?
I've given up that Yan is not here. I would suggest to me the election secretary to...
Yes.
...before other business.
Okay. Yes, I am. Any other discussion? Okay, okay. All those in favor of the agenda as amended?
Yay.
It is your man.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we take your vote, is it too late? Yan's is on his way. Perhaps you'll defer to that for Yan's.
We deferred it to Yan's. Okay, approval of minutes from May 24th, 2018. We had the table these two weeks ago we didn't have. Enough people had been at the meeting.
Meeting made. I know, but I wasn't here at the...
He wasn't there last...
At the... I wasn't here at the July 12th. Sorry.
What was that? Was Yan's on that meeting?
He was. He was. You've got to wait for him because there's only three of us, you, Yan's.
Yeah, so we'll table...
Well, that's a majority of the people, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll have to move the minutes.
No, Amani's here. You're here. And I'm here, that's right.
So we could do May 24th, but we can't do July 12th.
Which ones are we putting on right now?
May 24th.
Okay. Do I make a motion we accept the minutes of May 24th meeting as written?
Yep.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, closing paper?
Yep.
Staying.
Three, one.
No, no, no. Three, three.
Three, and then the extension, sorry.
I won't see what we can't read. July 12th. Moore and Lowry, Genong and again.
Oh, okay, yeah. We've got... That's right. Yan's was in Canada that day. Need a motion?
Move to accept it. I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept July 12th minutes. Any discussion? Anything that we need to add? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Extention.
Yep. Three, four, one, extension. Citizens' comment. If there are any citizens that have comments regarding items that are not on the agenda, we'll listen to. Mr. Deffler.
I had two things, but I'm willing to wait if you'd consider it on the other business so that you could move your agenda along. One is a request for change in definitions, which we talked about.
Oh, yes, yeah, and that is coming up under other business. We do have that listed.
Okay.
And the other one?
The other one was hidden meadows in the juice cottages. There's a meeting scheduled for August 15th at 9:00. They want to discuss using that back entrance that you, as the planning board, deemed emergency use only.
Okay.
And they want to open that up for construction vehicles for eight months out of the year.
That's going to be an interesting discussion.
Oh, yeah.
They're going to have to bring that to us.
Yep, they know that. When we think.
Yeah.
There's a meeting scheduled for that reason. August 15th.
Not with the planning board.
Just wanted you to be aware of it.
And who's the meeting with?
Who's meeting with Roger?
The people from the cottages. Joe and one other guy, Rick.
Rick White. Rick White, the engineer.
Was that in-house meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
My first question was, where's the planning board on this? So that was not the intent for the original approval that I understood.
Well, before, I mean, Ted, wouldn't they, if it was a condition of the plan that was only for emergency use only, would have to come before the planning board to revise anything like that?
Correct.
Absolutely.
I think they're trying to cover several bases at the same time.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate that heads up.
Any other?
Any other comments by anyone? Mr. Bassett?
Is it possible for members of the planning board who have been attending the street construction ordinance changes to give us an update on the status of that committee?
From what I understand, and two of the other members are here, so they can correct me if I'm wrong, but we seem to be moving toward a conclusion, at least according to what I understand, where there's a meeting on Monday night, and I think the intent is to have that pretty much wrapped up.
That's correct.
There have been changes to taking private ways and separating them out of the street ordinance. It would primarily affect the size of the private way, the construction of the private way, but it also affects primarily only people that have family estates, because the expansion, any expansion other than family estate members would fall under state law, which restricts it to once every five years.
I'm sorry, I'm going to say it to what?
Is that your understanding, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. From a construction point of view, we looked at it and said there was one, if it's a one-family private way, it's essentially a driveway, but if it's a private way, it can serve for two-plus houses, and will be like 16 feet wide, and it has the gravel, pretty much the same stuff that you were at one of the meetings for. But I don't have all of the details here.
But it only applies to family, I'm sorry. It only applies to family exemptions?
Family exemptions. There are some exemptions listed under state law, one of which is family, one of which is probate court, one of which is civil court. Can they order them?
Yes, it would be a civil court decision.
A civil court decision, and there was one, but it's essentially whatever main state subdivision sets, and they list out what the exemptions are. Everything else still applies, main state subdivision rules would still apply. So if you want, if you had two lots back there, and you wanted to split off a third lot, if it had been more than five years, you could do that. If it had been less than five years, it becomes a subdivision, and you have, then you have to follow up on making sure that everything is up to code.
State code or Arundel?
Arundel. The state code would, says that you can't do it unless it's covered with, if you do it before then, then you have to come in and it becomes a subdivision issue.
So there will be different rule. You have a road that serves three, four, or five houses. Could be two roads serve the same number of houses. One's built to one set of standards, and one's built to different set of standards?
It could be.
And that makes sense because?
Well, I didn't say it made sense. I said that's, that's the direction that this is heading right now.
To chair, question on that?
Yeah.
I mean, who's going to be governing this?
There is going to be...
Is this going to be done by the selectmen, since it's their prerogative of changing all this?
No, there's a design standards staff review group that is going to be doing this.
So we have nothing to do with it?
Not with the private ways. That is the way.
Just to make a point, you could have, you could have been involved.
Just come to the meetings.
Let's put it this way, Roger. I don't golf because guess what? Half the time I'm never listened to. That's why I didn't bother to go, because I'm usually overtalked.
Everybody's had the same opportunity.
Well, I'm just saying. That's why I didn't bother.
Are there any other questions from the public? Hearing then, we'll close, hearing none, we'll close the public comment, and we will move on to public hearings. Just for Yan's notification, we move this one to the end. Public hearing, Amani Acres, a minor subdivision application. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:10 to open the public hearing. Proposal for a four-lot standard subdivision on 23 acres located off Brimstone Road, tax map 18, Lot 1A, in the R4 and RP districts. Gary and Carrie Bracy are the owner and applicant, and Corner Post Land Surveying is the consulting agent.
Gary Bracy.
Gary Bracy, Mr. Bracy is...
Glad to be here.
Does anybody have any questions about this subdivision? Anybody have, want to make any comments? Ask Mr. Bracy any questions?
I have a comment. I'm Neil Smith, and this is my wife, Elena. We have property across the street.
Okay.
I've had the property for 40 years, and for the last 30, it's been used as a dog training area. And I just want to make the owner and potential owners aware that it's a dog training area. We train beagles there, and...
You can train beagles?
And so especially this time of year, sometimes it's used at 5:00 in the morning, sometimes it's 8, 9, 10, 11 o'clock at night when it's cool. So I want to make sure the potential owners are aware of the barking that goes on at that location. And we, I think at Taz's request, I have put that in writing. Sorry, I don't have enough copies for the whole, the whole board, but...
Would you like to read it soon?
What's that?
Would you like to read it into the record?
Uh, yeah, I don't mind reading this if you want me to. This is, this is... This memo is the follow-up on the site walk of April 12th, 2018, at 175 Brimstone Road, which we both attended. At that time, we informed the site committee that our property, the Brimstone Beagle Club, was directly across the street from the proposed subdivision of Gary and Carrie Bracy. We requested that the new owners be made aware of how our property is utilized. The Brimstone Beagle Club has been in existence and registered with the state of Maine for approximately 30 years, and we just want to reiterate that new owners and any potential residents of the subdivision should be made aware of our dog training ground. The potential is there for early morning and late evening training of dogs, especially during the warmer weather. These times of day are preferred times in order to keep the dogs cool and trained. Residents should be made aware that the potential exists for being beagles as they run. We do not want any surprises from, from our new neighbors, so we trust that this information has been shared with the Brayces and will be shared with any new homeowners. This memo is just to reiterate and request in writing that this has been accomplished. Thank you for your assistance in keeping all interested parties informed.
Neil, if I may, I think when you read that, you said, "We don't want any surprises from the new neighbors." I think you meant for the new neighbors.
That would be correct, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
I have no problem with that. As a matter of fact, my daughter probably will want to train.
Great.
So that would not be an issue for me at all.
Okay.
And I appreciate you coming and agreeing that.
Yeah. The potential new owners, you know, I don't want down at town hall after they've been there for a month saying, "Hey, you got to stop this."
Nope, I'm wrong.
"What's going on?"
Appreciate you coming here and helping.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Seems to implicate a doctrine in law called coming to the nuisance.
I've never heard.
You were there first.
Ted, I did bring, I think from your last meeting?
Yeah.
You know, just past you go, one of the issues was having like a warranty deed for the five-foot easement?
Yep.
The 30-foot, you know, drainage area, and then the no-cutting zone. This is what we came up with, hopefully.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honestly, Gary, improving the findings of fact that you had to provide this.
How's it going? Excellent. Are there any other comments on the Amani Acres subdivision? Yes, ma'am.
Melanie Agiton, I'm on the other side of them. So we have horses.
Okay.
Neighbors have horses, and there's a huge farm at the corner.
Right.
Just want to make you aware that it's all not, you know, roses all the time.
One of the reasons we bought it is my daughter loves horses too.
Yeah.
And so we went by all of them, and it was just like, well, it's several reasons. One, I love golf. I think I played one of the first rounds at Dutch Almer in '67. I'm from golf, me and Riddler. And I grew up there, and then my business had taken me, and then I retired about four years ago. And so I have, two of my daughters live up in Sanford area. I have eight grandkids, two great-grandkids that, you know, we come up in the summer and spend a lot of time with here. And my mom, she lives in York, and she lives in a house of building, 1884. She's, she'll be 89 this winter. So it's getting a little bit harder for her to get around, so it's one of the reasons we bought the property, and hopefully someday we'll be able to put a house on there. It's been a process.
Yeah.
Started, I think we started this in September. But, you know, I'll tell you something, I appreciate the process, even though it's costing me a lot of money and time, because where I come from in Florida, I live in St. John's County, if you Google St. John's County, it's the third largest, the third biggest growing county in the United States right now. And it's a shame of what they do when they clear cut, they clear cut. And probably like about two months before he came up here for the summer, they just announced, oh, five miles south of me, they just approved a 10,000 home project. I mean, 10,000 homes in one area. So it's kind of nice to see, you know, you go through this, and, you know, the way, you know, we all try to protect, you know, the property up here. Kind of refreshing. So I appreciate, you know, your time and, you know, the things we've gone through. First time I ever bought property. I've bought a lot of homes in my career and life, and this is kind of an eye-opening, and it's kind of been fun. And I'm glad I could be here tonight to see everybody.
Any other comments?
Sorry, I just wanted to finish up.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
No, it's okay.
I get rambling, I'm sorry.
So the horses are out, and they call to the other ones that are across the way, and they're...
They make some noise.
They do.
Yep.
So sometimes they do talk.
Yep.
They talk to the other horses, exactly.
Okay.
We had, the neighbors just had a new foal, and during that process, mine were calling over because they could hear everything.
Sure.
So it's, you know, it is what it is.
Kind of like...
I can't hear them anymore, but doesn't mean that, you know, people moving in won't be able to, so.
Okay.
Just want to make you aware of what you're moving into.
No, I don't know. Appreciate, appreciate you honestly. Well, he might have some horses, so your horses can talk to them.
And that's totally fine with me.
Someday, if my daughter has a way, I'm not going that way yet, but...
I would actually rather see pasture out there than three other houses, but...
Yep, I understand. I understand.
Anyone else? And I will call this public hearing to close at 7:19. And we will move on to the Arundel Conservation Trust trails at Limerick, and I'll open the public hearing on that at 7:19. Conditional use in shoreline zoning application. A proposal to construct low-impact walking trails linking the future town hall site with the eastern trail via a 37-acre parcel tax map, 28 Lot 5A, located on Limerick Road in the R1 Shoreland Overlay and Resource Protection District. Kenny Bunkport Conservation Trust is the owner. The Arundel Conservation Trust is the applicant, and Leah Lowry and Joan Howe are the applicant's agents. Take it away, Ms. Howe.
Well, this is my, well, actually, this is my second public hearing, having just had my first.
Does anybody have questions?
Questions about what we're trying to do?
Give us a quick synopsis.
I'll give you a quick synopsis. All right, so you've seen, does everybody know where the Limerick Road piece is, where the town hall is going to be? So the town has 10 acres. Yeah, did you just help stand right here? So the town has 10 acres, and this is the 10 acres. This is Limerick Road here. And the Arundel Conservation Trust has the whole back through. And so our plan is, there was some worry because there's a lot of wetlands in here, that's why we came here. But with this set of trails, which are the green lines here, we hope to, we're not going to get into the big part this way. So we hope to have trails so you can do a loop. There'll also be some smaller loops that will be there. Eventually, part of our agreement with the town is when the town hall is built, there'll be a parking area, a common parking area, so you'll be able to park there. But in the meantime, to keep people safe, and because this will connect to the eastern trail, under Roger's guidance, and the selectmen, the selectmen and the town manager, what we talked about, because actually it came up at one of these meetings by ship, about we have a little parking bay. So we thought we'd have maybe a better way to do that. So I went and talked to the town manager, and the selectmen agreed, and Roger did the work. And so there is now a temporary parking area right on Limerick Road, so folks can park there and begin to access the trails. Now, the other thing that we have with this, it's not quite shown here, but the eastern trail is this purple line. You'll notice that our land does not touch that. The river is right here, and you'll notice that our land does not touch that. But thanks to the generosity of selectman Mr. Phil Labby, this is his land, he has donated to us an easement, so that we'll be able to connect through these trails right here across his land that he's already sort of started for us, to the eastern trail. So you'll be able to do that loop. The other is a line right along his property line that will lead to the river. And there we have about a 15-foot square area where we hope to have a picnic bench or a sitting bench. And this property, actually, when Phil did this, this gave the town of Arundel the first public access to the Kenny Bunk River in generations. And we now have a second property that will also do that, down the River Road. But that is our plan. We want to keep everything as natural as we can. Some areas are a little mushy, so we'll have boardwalks to walk on so that we can protect the plant life and keep your feet dry. There looks like we'll have to put in a little bridge right here where it's quite wet to get over. There's now pallets over that. And there's a gully here with a little river to cross over into Phil's land, and there's a little gully right here, so we will have those. But none of these bridges are permanent fixtures. They're, we can, they're just sort of sitting on there. They'll be very stable, but they can be moved. So we are after this public hearing, and no other questions, we should be able to stop those. We are still working with the eastern trail. We have worked with the gas company, and they're all said it looks like we're not going to have to do anything to, the gas pipe is far enough below that we don't have to worry about that. So we just have to work out the agreement with the eastern trail, and we should be able to do it. Is this helpful? Questions on this? Ready to take a pretty walk?
Anybody have any questions?
Ms. Chair.
Roger?
The usage of this and the access to the eastern trail, are the same standards going to be applied of usage, meaning like no motorized vehicles or anything else, no snowmobiles? I'm just saying, it's not allowed on the eastern trail. Is it coming under the same guidelines for this?
Yes, yes. This will be for bicycles and for pedestrians and snowshoes and cross-country skiing.
Well, I mean, that's the same standards as for the trail, but I mean, I didn't know you might...
Well, that's not to say, I mean, you know, when we meet the eastern trail, we have to follow their guidelines.
Yeah.
That's not to say that in the, in the future, because this is a rundle, and snowmobile is important in rundle, that we might want to talk to folks and see in the future, is there something that maybe we can help accommodate them.
Okay, I just said, just taking a hint.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a future plan and not included here, we knew we would have, we'd have to come back, because this specifically is for just those snowshoeing, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, bicycles, and walking.
Mr. Benson?
Through the chair, it's pretty mature, but if there is an access that's not visible from anywhere else where snowmobiles are allowed onto the eastern trail, that could be a problem for the eastern trail. It's up to them to figure out what to do.
Yeah, and we...
I understand the snowmobiles are part of the rundle culture, but I'm, they're, they are not always considerate of property owners.
They, they may not, but it's in my experience when it brought into the discussion and takes on ownership in it, and they understand that things could, could go away if they're, if they're not, that they help, help police their own folks. That's been my experience. But again, that's in the future discussions.
Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, I'll close this meeting at 7:26. Thank you. And we will move right in. Pending applications, item number one, Amani Acres Minor Subdivision. A proposal for a four-lot standard subdivision on 23 acres located on Brimstone Road, tax map 18, Lot 1A, in the R4 and RP districts. Kenny and Carrie Bracy are the owners and the applicants, and Corner Post Land Surveying is the consulting agent. We've done our site walk, we've had public hearings. Does the board have any questions for the applicants? Is there any concerns at all that you guys have that we need to address? Marty?
One question only, and I've thrown it out. Have they turned in a tech, the water? We had that discussion about...
The easement?
Well, water being turned up for salt or possibly...
Because we did have a discussion...
We had to test it.
Okay.
That's, I'm just... Went down, and they, they did a couple of testing.
Okay.
They only, they only, they said that the water was fine, but in the one where, where there is a well, I think it was getting like 14 down for a minute. But the, they did say to test it for radon, and last night I guess it...
I'm just trying, because we was in discussion, and I've been now at the last couple of meetings there, I just want to make sure that the planning board's covering their butt.
Yeah, there's a certain threshold that if it goes along on your, on your wall, that you will hit the saltwater after.
Correct, that's what the butters had mentioned also. That's all I have, sir.
Anything, Roger?
Nope. Then we're moving to the findings of facts.
That's the next item on the list. Jamie, any questions for Yan's?
None, thank you.
Okay. Arundel Planning Board, findings of fact and approval motion, Amani Acres subdivision, July 26th, 2018. Whereas on October 12th, 2017, the planning board received from Gary and Carrie Bracy a subdivision sketch plan for a four-lot non-clustured subdivision on a 22.33 acre parcel located on Brimstone Road, tax map 18, Lot 1A, in the R4 and RP districts. Whereas, based on the comments of the planning board, the applicant withdrew their sketch plan proposal to address wetland 100-year flood plan and shoreline zoning issues raised by the planning board at the October 12th meeting. Whereas on March 22nd, 2018, the planning board received a revised subdivision sketch plan from the applicant delineating revised shoreline zoning and wetland boundaries based on field investigations. Whereas on April 12th, 2018, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public site walk of the proposed subdivision after due notification of all the butters, and then waived requirements for the submission of a stormwater drainage plan and encouraged the applicant to prepare a minor subdivision plan. Whereas on June 14th, 2018, the applicant submitted a formal minor subdivision plan, which the planning board deemed complete. Whereas on July 26th, 2018, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearings in accordance with Article 711 of the Arundel subdivision ordinance and Section 97 F1 of the Arundel land use ordinance, whereupon the Arundel Planning Board reviewed, and given due consideration of the applicant's amended application, has arrived at the following. Findings of fact, number one, the owner with right title and interest of tax map 18, Lot 1A, is Gary and Carrie Bracy. Number two, the proposed development called Amani Acres is located on 23.23... The proposed development called Amani Acres is located on twenty-three point two-three... Is it twenty-three or twenty-two?
Twenty.
Because it says twenty-two in another spot.
Yes, twenty-two point twenty-two.
Okay. It's located on twenty-two point two-three acres located off Brimstone Road in the R4 and RP districts. Number three. The applicant proposes to develop four conventional three-plus acre lots with access via individual driveways directly onto Brimstone Road. Number four. All residential units on the lot shall be constructed with operating automatic residential sprinkler systems in conformance with NFPA thirteen D and approved by the Arundel Fire Chief. Number five. All lots will have driveway access and frontage directly on Brimstone Road. Number six. All septic systems shall be located outside of the FEMA one-hundred-year floodplain as identified on FEMA firm maps dated June fourth, nineteen ninety-six, as shown on the record plan. Number seven. All single-family houses built within the designated one-hundred-year floodplain June fourth, nineteen ninety-six, FEMA firm maps dated June fourth, nineteen ninety-six, shall be constructed in compliance with Section five point eight of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance until such time that the proposed revised FEMA firm maps are adopted by the State of Maine and the Town of Arundel. Number eight. No clearing zones delineated on the record subdivision map dated five thirty-one eighteen shall be referenced in the individual deeds of lots one through four, and enforcement capabilities of the Town of Arundel shall also be referenced in said deeds. Number nine. The applicants will grant formal drainage easement to the Town of Arundel along the property frontage on Brimstone Road and on the western boundary of Lot one as delineated on the record subdivision plan. Number ten. The applicant has submitted plans and engineering drawings for the proposed subdivision in the following documents. A, a hydro-geologic nitrate study prepared by Stonehill Environmental Incorporated dated May thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. B, final minor subdivision plan set for Amani Acres, prepared by Gary and Kerry Bracy, prepared by...
Corner.
No, no, because it said it was prepared... It should say, prepared for Gary and Kerry Bracy, prepared by Corner Post Surveying Incorporated dated five thirty-one eighteen. C, Main Department of Transportation Traffic Movement Permit. D, a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, number NAE two thousand eighteen dash zero zero seven nine zero, dated May fourth, two thousand eighteen, permitting the fill of two thousand five hundred fifty-six square feet of wetlands to construct a driveway to the rear of Lot number one. E, homeowner assoc... We don't have that.
Yeah, I have the program.
Oh, no, the next thing is homeowner association. Conformance with Article eleven, Performance Standards. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the minor subdivision plan application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section eleven and twelve of the Arundel Subdivision Regulation as follows. Eleven point one, water pollution. The proposed project will not discharge runoff directly into any water body and provides a method of disposal treatment that will not require a license or permit from the main VEP and meets the town water pollution control standards. Eleven two, water supply. The proposed subdivision is not within one thousand feet of a public water supply, and therefore, individual wells and onsite, on-septic systems will be installed for each residential and commercial lot. As shown on the record plans, all proposed septic systems shall be located outside of the FEMA one-hundred-year floodplain. In lieu of a static water reservoir, the applicant proposes to install automatic residential sprinkler systems in conformance with NFPA thirteen D and thirteen R, where applicable, as approved by the Arundel Fire Chief. Thirteen three, impact on existing water supplies. The proposed project will not require and therefore not impact established public water supplies or suppliers. Well logs from the surrounding properties indicate adequate water supply for individual wells. Eleven four, soil erosion control plan. The applicant has submitted a plan demonstrating adequate soil erosion control measures to protect downstream properties and exposed slope during the construction process. Eleven five, traffic conditions. The vehicle trip generation of this project is anticipated to be less than forty trips per day, thereby not achieving a level of service E-rating during the peak hour. There is adequate site distance from the proposed driveway locations for each of the four lots to meet the minimum site distance requirements. Given the geometry of the land and the nature of the development, the planning board did not require the applicant to provide future road accesses to adjacent properties. Eleven six, sewage disposal. Sewage disposal shall be accommodated by onsite septic systems. All septic systems shall be located outside the FEMA one-hundred-year floodplain as delineated on the record subdivision plan. Eleven seven, solid waste. The proposed project will not generate undue solid waste volumes that would tax the town's capacity to dispose of solid waste. Eleven eight, impacts on scenic beauty, historic sites and rare natural areas. The applicants have designated a large portion of the property for permanent open space that will be retained and maintained by the individual property owners. The limits of project forest land removal are delineated on the record plans. Vegetative removal within the no-clearing areas are subject to enforcement by the Town of Arundel. There are no archaeological, historical, historic or critical shoreline areas identified on the site, nor are any areas identified by the main natural heritage program on the site. The project is not located within one thousand three hundred twenty feet of any deer wintering yard identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Eleven nine, conformance with the comprehensive plan. The project is in conformance with the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plans for the R4 and RP districts. Eleven ten, financial and technical ability. The applicant has the technical and financial capability to complete the project as approved. Eleven eleven, impact on water quality or shoreline. The project is not located in the watershed of Brimstone Pond and therefore exempt from the standards of eleven eleven. Eleven twelve, impact upon groundwater quality. The groundwater assessment was prepared by Stonehill Environmental Incorporated, indicating that the proposed project will not have a deleterious impact upon groundwater or potable water supplies on each of the subdivided lots. Eleven thirteen, floodplain management. The project is located within FEMA-identified one-hundred-year floodplain as delineated on the nineteen ninety-six firm maps. Draft releases of the two thousand seventeen FEMA firm maps show that the entire project will be reclassified as being entirely outside of the floodplain area once the revised maps are adopted by the State of Maine and the Town of Arundel. Eleven fourteen, freshwater wetlands. The applicant has identified all freshwater wetlands on the project site and has designed the project to have minimal impact upon these resources. Eleven fifteen, stormwater management. Due to the lack of significant impervious surface and common infrastructure, the planning board has waived the requirement for submission of a stormwater management plan for the project. Eleven sixteen, reservation of open space, common lands, fire protection facilities and private way. The applicant has designated a no-clearing zone at the rear of lots two through four and along the RP boundary on Lot one. These no-clearing zones shall be referenced in the deeds for all of the proposed lots. Conclusion of the planning board. The criteria of Title thirty A, MRSA, Section four-four-zero-four has been met. Number two, the standards of the Arundel subdivision regulations have been met. Number three, standards of Section eight point six of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance has been met. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the final minor subdivision plan of Amani Acres, a four-lot non-clustered subdivision on a twenty-two point three-three acre parcel located on Brimstone Road, Tax Map eighteen, Lot one A, in the R4 and RP districts, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the subdivision must be recorded in New York County Registry of Deeds within ninety days of the date upon which the plan is approved and signed by the board. Otherwise, it shall become null and void. Number two, no changes, eratious modifications or revisions shall be made in any final plan after approval has been given by the board and endorsed in writing on the plan unless the revised final plan is first submitted and the board approves any modifications. Number three, approval of the board of the subdivision plan shall not be deemed to constitute or be evidence of any acceptance by the municipality of any street easement or other open space shown on the plan. Number four, all applicable easements to the Town of Arundel and deed restrictions referenced in the findings of fact, items eight and nine, shall be recorded in the New York County Registry of Deed prior to the transfer of properties. Evidence of compliance shall be submitted to the town planner. Number five, no building permits shall be issued by the code enforcement officer until all lots have been pinned or monumented by the record surveyor, so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this twenty-sixth day of July, two thousand eighteen. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Question?
Yes, Marty.
One, did we ever receive anything from the fire chief besides being verbal?
The fire chief, no. The fire chief, it was just a verbal from the fire chief, but your... The applicant had basically stated, no, these because I want them in sprinkler systems on them.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, he told me the three different ways of doing it. He recommended regular systems. I... So that's kind of what I wanted to do.
We've always had something in paper, and again, we haven't gotten it. And second alternative, is there a homeowner association?
No. There is no homeowners association.
Because everything comes onto Brimstone Road, it's all...
Okay, okay, that's fixed. Nothing in common, individual.
Yeah, they're all individual lots. That's why the request that the deed reference, if the no-cut zone be included in the deeds as individuals, otherwise that would go to a homeowner's association.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On that specific point. And with reference to findings of fact, number eight. There is a, there is a reference in the proposed deed in the last paragraph to the no-cutting zones, which I think is what is intended by the findings of fact, and we find it in the deed. But we don't find anything referenced in the deed about the enforcement capabilities of the Town of Arundel. I think that's an easy fix. Seems to me it should be in there because otherwise there is the possibility of a situation where all the landowners within the subdivision agree not to observe the condition. In other words, it's an interior or internal waiver of restrictions. But I don't think the restrictions are necessarily met wholly solely for the landowners within the subdivision. So it seems to me that just requesting of Mr. Bracy to add a provision to the deed in that same paragraph to the effect of the enforcement capabilities of the Town of Arundel would be, would make that factual finding correct.
I didn't read something about that specific issue, I thought I read something...
Back, the other one is eleven sixteen, this opens up again, regulation of open space. I don't see, I don't see if they're...
Yeah, you read it smart.
I think it's just simply a point clarification, it's not a big deal, but it would be good for homeowners to know that they can't get together and waive that.
There are already future homeowners.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Does the board want to consider putting in also a warning, also on this, that there should be a reference on the plan? That there is a dog beagle training facility across the street and domestic animals in the area, and that there will be nuisance noises. Homeowners should expect that.
I definitely think that that would be a good idea in relation to the bidding deals. In terms of the horses, well, I suppose it's...
Well, the beagles, I think would be...
I definitely think that would be, would have been put on the plan. If nothing else, you know, if the potential homeowner decides not to look at the plan...
Well, they're tied with turning wood.
Well, yeah, somebody's going to look at that. But I don't think they're going to care. But I do think it should be on the plan.
To protect the existing property and all that stuff.
So just have Dan add that to the plan?
Yes.
Yeah, just have him give me a call.
Okay. On both those issues?
Yeah. So would you amend, so we have to amend our findings of fact on this?
We do.
We would have to add something to that. I got an attorney here who's...
With a wordsmith.
I started this. I'm sure you can make it sound so much better.
So let's move to that, condition number six. Well, six and seven. Because one of them requires a note on the deed, the other one requires a note on the plan.
Six doesn't...
No, we don't have a six, we just, we stopped at five.
Well, that's number four. The reference is number four. Calls both the different drainage and the...
Okay, sweet.
We got them?
Sure. Chair, our planner suggested the following language. There shall be a note on the plan that the Brimstone Beagle Club trains beagles potentially during morning and late-night hours across the street on the northern side of Brimstone Road, and will generate grandfathered noise nuisances. Probably potentially generate...
Right, I would also say, hey, I would also suggest we refer to specifically the property now and formerly Neil G. Smith, as shown on the plan.
Yes, it held in your individual names.
Okay. That's why it's shown, yeah.
On the LaPrel and Smith property. All right. Okay, I'll just, I'll just... Got a tag in my, do you want to move on, or are there other things you want to do?
Well, I think the only other thing we have is the approval, the motion and vote on the findings of fact. As amended.
Can I make a motion, we approve the findings of fact as amended?
Okay.
Motion has been made in second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor.
Yeah.
I don't assume you're going to say yes as well?
I'm sorry. Yes, I will.
It is unanimous.
Congratulations. Yeah, I didn't call you. I'm going to need a miler. About this, it was the current, two milers, one for you to record. So you want two, because these two are... All right.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Mike Rela.
I still can't...
Thank you.
As a friend, Dean's wife is a dog, and what you're trying to share from the house, he can't bring that thing. No, again, it's own.
Yeah, that be involved.
That's probably... Okay.
Like they say, you can hold your own blue tricks.
The next item. The Arundel Conservation Trust trails at Limerick, conditional use and shoreline zoning application, a proposal to construct low impact walking trails linking the future town hall site with the eastern trail via a thirty-seven acre parcel tax map twenty-eight lot five A located on Limerick Road in the R one shoreline overlay and resource protection district. Kenny Bunkport Conservation Trust is the owner, the Arundel Conservation Trust is the applicant, and Leah Lowery and Joan Hull are the applicant's agents. Does the board have any questions to the applicants? I was hoping somebody said yes, this is a lot of reading.
You want me to do it?
No.
I can do it fast enough.
Somebody will give you a break.
For the town of Arundel, findings of fact and motion for approval, the Arundel Conservation Trust trail system, shoreline zoning permit, whereas on June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a shoreline zoning conditional use application from the Arundel Conservation Trust Act to construct low impact walking trails linking the future town hall site and the eastern trail on a thirty-seven acre parcel tax map twenty-eight lot five A located on Limerick Road in the R one shoreline overlay, stream protection and resource protection districts. Whereas on July twelfth, two thousand eighteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public sidewalk on the proposed project site and after careful review determined the application to be complete. Whereas on July twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, the Arundel, the Planning Board conducted a public hearing in conformance with the land use ordinance section ten six three three, and whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact number one, the owner of the property is the Kenny Bunkport Conservation Trust and the Arundel Conservation Trust is the applicant. Number two, the thirty-seven acre property is located on Limerick Road, tax map twenty-eight lot five A in the R one shoreline overlay, stream protection and resource protection districts. The property contain, the property currently contains a complex of streams and forested wetlands interspersed with mixed hardwood and softwood uplands. Number four, the applicant proposes to clear and blaze a network of low impact hiking trails commencing at the upland site of the future Arundel Town Hall, fence around the perimeter of the dominant resource protection forested wetland to connect to a trail easement along Duck Brook, granted over a twenty-two point eight acre parcel tax map lot, tax map twenty-eight lot ten A, and then connecting to the eastern trail on tax map twenty-eight lot fifteen. Number five, several small stream crossings are proposed to be traversed by temporary boardwalk type bridges erected on removable pre-cast concrete piers as illustrated in detailed drawings including in the record map submissions. Where unstable ground conditions are encountered, the applicant proposes to deploy board planks laid directly on the soil. Number six, the proposed trail system is proposed to traverse primarily upland soils located around the perimeter of the central forested wetland. Number seven, parking is being temporarily provided on a thirty by thirty gravel parking pad located off Limerick Road on the town portion of the parcel. There is in excess of five hundred linear feet of site distance required to ingressing and egressing vehicles from the parking area. This temporary pad will be replaced by a formal paved parking lot constructed in conjunction with the construction of the future town hall. Number eight, submissions documenting the proposed trail system include property survey and wetlands delineation map prepared by Survey Go Technics Incorporated for the town of Arundel and dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, I hope. Trail location maps prepared by the Arundel Conservation Trust and dated July twelfth, two thousand eighteen, detailed sheets for water course crossings prepared by the Arundel Conservation Trust and a survey of easements granted to Kenny Bunk Conservation Trust by Philip, Philip Labby. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the applicant should be in conformance with the approved, with the approval criteria of section eight, six, seven of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Eight, six, seven, one, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, eight, and nine of this ordinance, in that the proposed trail uses are permitted as conditional shoreline zone uses in the RP and SP districts and permitted uses in the SOP district. Temporary nature of the structures meets the standards of land use ordinance sections five and eight. So move. Need a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, one, all those in favor?
Yay.
We have four in favor, one extension. Eight, six, seven, two, the proposed project conforms to the goals and objectives of the Arundel Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan encourages open space preservation and environmental education as well as promoting outdoor exercise and enjoyment of Arundel's natural heritage.
So move. Yay.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, two. Yes, Martin.
Question, thought only about preservation or anything else. Conservation group, they want to post also no hunting because turn out that prior to that area out back, it used to be very well endowed with a lot of deer.
We saw it on the sidewalk, there's a stand out there.
I'm just mentioning it, no, I'm mentioning it because I know the area from Keys and everything else, and being public, public with bicycling and this and that, but during the season, being public land, thought only.
Something to think about. Any other discussion on eight, six, seven, two? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Four in favor, one extension. Eight, six, seven, three, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. No federal or state permits are required as long as the structures remain temporary and outside of the resource.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Four and one extension. Eight, six, seven, four, the proposed project will not adversely impact upon the existing water regime, hydrology, salinity, water chemistry, flow volume, or flow velocity of wetlands, ponds, streams, and water courses. All structures will be located outside of the resources, paths shall be cleared of natural topography, and where erosion potential exists, wood chips shall be applied.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, four. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Four and one extension. Eight, six, seven, five, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of groundwater resources. The project will have no impact upon existing groundwater resources.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, five. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Four and one extension. Eight, six, seven, six, the proposed project will not result in sedimentation, erosion, and/or nutrient loading of adjacent and downstream wetlands, water body streams, and water courses. The low impact nature of the trail building will not present a sedimentation or erosion threat to surrounding resources.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, six. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four and one extension. Eight, six, seven, seven, the proposed project will not have a deleterious impact upon existing invaluable aquatic and wildlife habitats and populations. The trail system will not have any impact on existing aquatic or terrestrial habitats.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, seven. Any discussion?
Yay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four and one extension. Eight, six, seven, eight, the proposed project will not adversely impact critical wildlife habitats and marine resources. The trail system will not have any impact on existing aquatic or terrestrial habitats.
So move. Yeah, second.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, eight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Four and one extension. Eight, six, seven, nine, the proposed project will not adversely impact important local cultural resources, archaeological and historic resources, or the visual quality of shorelines and surrounding environments as viewed from the resource and public spaces. The trail system will enhance the appreciation and access to local cultural and visual quality resources.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded eight, six, seven, nine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yay.
Yes.
Four and one extension. Eight, six, seven, ten, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life in the resource area. The trail system will not generate offensive odors, dust, debris, or other nuisances nor will it degrade the quality of life in the neighborhood.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, ten. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yay.
Eight, six, seven, eleven, the proposed project will not adversely impact the integrity of important vegetative stands as well as unique natural areas as identified by the Maine Department of Conservation. There are no unique natural areas on the property identified by the M D O C.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, eleven. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Four and one extension. Eight, six, seven, twelve, the proposed project meets the approval standards of land use ordinance section ten six four. The trail system as proposed meets the approval standards of section ten six four of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for eight, six, seven, twelve, all those in favor?
Yay.
Yes.
Four and one is extension. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby grants a shoreline zoning conditional use permit to the Arundel Conservation Trust Act to construct low impact walking trails linking the future town hall site with the eastern trail on a thirty-seven acre parcel tax map twenty-eight lot five A located on Limerick Road in the R one shoreline overlay, stream protection and resource protection districts, subject to the following conditions. Number one, there shall be no deviation from the approved plans and details without prior planning board approval, so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this twenty-sixth day of July two thousand eighteen.
Yay.
What is your pleasure, gentlemen?
Make a motion, we approve the findings of facts as written and read.
Yay.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the findings of fact. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Four in favor, one extension. Congratulations.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Very good.
I have the document on my desk. We have to.
We have to.
Don't go away, we'll have some stuff.
Oh, okay. I'll look over here.
Thank you. There were. We need the cops to sit down.
Oh, good. What cops?
We need to sign that.
I have this free, so, don't you tell me.
They don't have a miler. We need more than a miler.
Yeah, we need more than a cop. Staples.
We have to get copies of the address.
We have to sign. We have to sign. We're good to go on that one. Okay, the next item.
And I'll send you Grable back, you're back here.
So I'll try and back that.
Four, one more before that.
Yeah.
And how many of these?
Four, two papers, a miler. Well, you don't need a miler, two papers and one miler. That's what you asked.
Staples or a miler?
I think they do.
Maybe I can go from Staples.
Oh, yeah. Staples.
Is that who did that? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but they didn't draw on, on there, that's the only thing.
I can draw a miler. I'll figure it out, don't worry about it.
Well, either that or else.
We got this done.
If you, if Staples doesn't do it, can you call?
They may be able to scan it and reprint it for you on my watch.
Item three, B and B trucking, a finally sightline review sketch plan, is a proposal to demolish and rebuild the truck repair facility with associated parking and support facilities on a two point zero four acre parcel with land tax map four lot thirteen in the Alfred Road Business District, Robert Masters is the owner and Paul Daboy T E is the applicant's agent. And.
I don't think we could do anything, there's no reason.
There's nothing, because we did a sidewalk.
Nobody's here.
No, there was, there was confusion.
The other thing, we also told the engineer that we didn't think he was on the agenda, that's why he's not here.
Yeah. He didn't think he was?
Yeah. He's, he's not any place close to, to ready.
Yeah, they've got some stuff to do.
Well, you still can discuss. You're still discussing.
The biggest, I think one of the biggest things that we came up with, because we didn't, we weren't able to, we saw where the building is, we saw where the cuts going out to the street, we didn't get to see the pond because the pond is quite, quite a ways back out in through the trees and the woods. But I think the biggest issue that most of us seem to have is that it appears that he's operating a junkyard. There's all kinds of stuff scattered out on the backside of the property. I told Paul to, that he needed to address. Yeah, he's gonna have to move all of that stuff to do the work. He's not, because it's all where he plans on putting papers, so he's gonna have to do stuff. It's rusting into the ground where it sits.
Couple of, a couple of trailers, well, trailers that, that didn't have, didn't have, I guess, I guess, sir?
No, 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 I didn't look that closely, but a couple of trailers that didn't have any kind of truck associated with it, that, you know, maybe to sort of, as I turn them there, the story, they're gonna stay, we recommended he, or told him he needed to show them on the plan. Don't start location where it's sitting right up by the road now is likely gonna have to move at least somewhat, so, few little things he's got to be able to show and take care of.
These are all conveyed to the.
Yeah.
To the engineer.
To the engineer.
Okay, all right.
There's, he's going to be talking with the neighbors, there's a discussion of the fence along the property line between him and the house, they're gonna discuss with the neighbor how far back that fence should go.
If they want it, vice versa.
They may say they don't want the fence.
And also there was a discussion about the trees.
Yeah.
The big hemlock trees, if they were gonna stay or not, depending on if the neighbors wanted them there on the neighbor's property, since they're removing the other, other trees as a neighborly.
They're not, they're not on the neighbor's property, they're on his.
They're on his property.
No, I don't think the hemlocks were, sir.
Yeah, because he, Paul was saying that the property line was within five feet of the well.
Right.
So that, so it's gonna be on the other side of those trees if they put up a fence.
Right. Between those trees and the well, only a budding piece.
The hemlocks to the applicant's.
Right.
Okay, I, that's.
But the question would be if, if the applicant, they're not in, in, in the way of any of the construction. If the neighbor didn't mind them taking them down, then they may look to take them down when they take the rest of them, but they were gonna confer with the neighbor before they did that.
Okay, so.
Good neighbor policy.
Right.
So basically, what's, what's happened is they, they have to do some serious modifications.
Oh, yeah.
To the program.
Right.
To the site program.
Right.
Yeah.
And the plan looks solid for what it showed us as far as the outline of where the building's gonna go, and the parking spaces, that looked like it conformed to the plan that we seen it.
Also, the percentage of the overall lot usage within, well, within reason and everything else, way below the.
Yeah, because he's working.
Density of now.
Yes.
My, I think my concern was that there are more, more vehicles on the site right now than parking spaces provide, not even, even without customers, so.
Well, I think.
What's that correct to me is the, the size of the parking spaces that was depicted on the plan. This is gonna be a truck facility, will we not be expecting much larger sized spaces?
From my recollection, that he, he did oversize them a little bit, especially in the, the back piece where it might be more inclined to be storage.
Those are, those, those vehicles that are on there now are really big.
Yeah, they're bigger than the, the small box truck parking spaces he provided, that's why an inventory of what you're gonna have for rentals should be on the site.
I don't think he, I don't run.
If he's gonna continue running the rental facility.
I don't think he runs a rental facility. I think it's just, okay, then I understand, I'm misunderstanding.
He told me he'd, he'd like to continue running that. He told me he'd, he'd like to continue running that.
Okay.
There's a question, how many are you gonna have generally in providing adequate spaces, so they're not all, all of us, or repeating the problem that we got. Can't.
I like it. Okay. That's about all we can do.
Pretty much, that's pretty much it right now. Phil, Paul's gonna do it all put together, get stuff laid out on the plan. The applicant was not there, so we didn't have a chance to talk to him there.
Okay.
The, he was informed we were going to be there, but he was a no-show, the applicant.
Close the door. Okay.
Next.
The next item is other business. We did have something come up at the, the workshop for private ways that we should probably look at addressing. Roger might be able to explain the, the situation a little better than I am, or, or Ted, but we have somebody in town who, when he bought the lot, had frontage. There's since been a private road that went up the side of his lot and forcing him to violate the setback rules. And he, he doesn't use the private, the, the private way, he has no access to it, but his house is close enough to the private way that it violates setback. Is that correct?
He's proposing to build a barn. And his setbacks, as it stands, the way the definition is, frontage, classifies that he has frontage on Lock Haven Road as well as that private way, which affects basically instead of a fifty-foot setback, well, instead of twenty-five foot setback from the side, he has that fifty. Again, he has no access to this private way. I don't know how you can hold somebody to the standard where they have frontage on two sides.
It's not an issue created by him, right?
It was created after.
So. He was there first.
So we have, we have a definition, I've already sat down with Jim. A definitional change to corner lot, because this is what this is. Which in, in, basically says that those that, if, if a lot is created, a corner lot, or has multiple frontages due to no action by the property owner or previous owner, then they only have to pick one lot frontage. And that frontage is on whatever street they are serviced on.
Do you think we should have that ready by the time we have a special town meeting?
We can have it ready in the next meeting.
Ted, why, why wouldn't it be just simpler in that either the definition of the corner lot is, is tweaked such that you have to have, you have to have legal rights of access to the two roads that make the corner?
We can do that, so.
Instead of getting into the weeds of who created what and whatever, if you've got a corner lot, but you have no rights, if you've got what appears to be a corner lot, but you have no rights to the second leg of it, then that's not a corner lot. Make the corner lot being you have a, a lot with two means of, of legal egress or access to that to be a legitimate corner lot.
Yeah, I, I recommend that.
Would, would that solve a problem?
Well, Jim, Jim found some holes in that, so I'll bring it up to him again. You know, what we can do is, is I'll write it out and then, and present it and get his comment, okay?
Yeah, like, I mean, he sees it all the time.
He sees the hole in, I can't remember exactly what the hole was in that, but he found a hole in that, so. Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may, if this, is it okay for you?
Mm-hmm.
I understand what Mr. Lowry's comments, I think that, and, and simple is always better, but I think that definitional change could be abused. Potential, I, I think there's a potential.
The, the only.
For someone, for.
The, the only concern.
Corner lot to be created, in, in, in a way, a brand new corner lot to be created in a way that didn't have access to one of these two.
Well, they could.
Was legally denied that access. Or was legally denied that access.
Yeah.
You know, it's owned by the same person who created it.
The, the issue that I would have with, with that is that private road is not a town road. That road belongs to somebody else, and we're telling them, you have no choice, you have to let this other guy use that for. I have a problem with that. I have a bigger problem with the fact that we've cut this guy off and, and prevented him from doing something with his property, so I think the definition change will, will work better. I don't know, it would be interesting to see what Jim's rationale was.
Cause we battered around for a long time.
But yeah, we should, we should look at that and get that taken care of as quickly as possible, so that we get to the town meeting.
Is, is there no recourse for this individual?
No, there isn't, no. Not the way it is right now, corner lot, corner lot is defined as being a lot with a frontage on a private way or a public street, or a street, it's just a street, and a private way is defined right now as being a street, privately owned street. That's the problem.
Now.
So Jim says that, there's nothing I can do.
Is this on what road?
Well, this is on.
I'm asking.
Lock Haven.
Lock Haven.
It's Tucker's Way.
Where's that?
Tucker's Way is, it's, it's just, it's just up from John Cliff Road. If you know where that is, that's where Richard, Richard Longjoy had his entibidal landscaping, he's on that.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, it's actually just north of that. Eight, six hundred feet, something like that. And it serves, two, three, three houses already. He's not on that road, he's on the opposite side of that, so that road was created on the Longjoy property to, to build three houses. And he happened to be on the property on the other side, so they put that road right up, right along the property line.
The right way does plus the property line.
Yeah, goes along the property line, which they have no access to, no legal rights to.
The other side of this coin, I think, is if he had an existing barn there, and somebody goes and puts a roadway in, and they have to hold twenty feet setback on the entrance, but then they can run that private road right up alongside the property line.
Yep.
They just made this guy's building non-conforming, and if he ever wanted to add on and do anything, he can.
Yeah.
Say, my woman, consider just how you're gonna wear this. And I think, I don't know why you can hold somebody to go stand in that they get frontage on two lots anyway. If his plan shows, I'm gonna access this, this is my frontage on Lock Haven Road, why is he gonna be setback?
And I think.
An additional setback.
It's only because of the definition of.
Right, and I think that the change in the definition that saw that from.
Yeah, but I'm saying, even if it was a, not a private way that he's up against, even if he's up against another town road, you're holding him to a standard that.
If it were another town road. Yeah, he could, he, I think.
Why would he have to have frontage on two roads for, for one property?
You don't have to have frontage, it just happened this guy put a, a road right next to this guy's property.
But he can't.
Now he has to have frontage on two.
And that created two, because the definition of, of a front lot, or the front area of a lot, is that section of the lot that, that is adjacent to a road, a street, whether it be private or public.
Can't we change the definition?
Yeah, that's what we're proposing.
Right, that's what, what Ted is proposing.
In time for the town meeting.
Yep.
That special meeting is coming up.
That's what we're hoping.
Time frame, we really don't know for sure when that's gonna be done.
But, but the sooner we get it done, cause I mean, we can make that change, we can hold a public hearing, and we can be awesome to go.
The wheel's driving slow sometimes, but in the meantime, this guy has a loan to build a building that he can't put where he wants to put, and construction season in this neck of the woods is pretty short.
And, and we can't arbitrarily give him the permission to do that, we have to follow the process.
I understand the process, but I'm saying, this other process, they might not come together really neatly, is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And as long as this keeps dragging on, so I'm not proposing two special meetings, but. If this other process grinds on longer.
Address.
No hardship, he's got.
Well, there was a hardship.
Yeah, but Jim, come on, you know, the, the fourth, the fourth criteria is that you cannot get a reasonable return without a granting of the, of, of the variance, and he's already got a house on there, and that's more than a reasonable return. So Z B A will not grant a variance for this. Ninety-eight percent of mall variance requests are denied by Z B As. So that's the toughest one of the mall, is, I mean, he passes that this, the, the, the non-conformity is not the result of the owner's actions or previous owner's action, clear as that, it is in, it's not, so it's not self-imposed or self-inflicted, and it meets all the other criterias. The one, the toughest one to get by is that you can't get a reasonable return without the variance being granted. And.
So is that, is that, I mean, going in a different direction, is that something that's state mandated?
That's state, that's right out of state mandate.
When was this additional private way established?
I don't know, back when Tucker's Way was done, I don't know, in the eighties, I don't know. I have no idea, a long time ago.
I mean, I'm just.
Thirty-foot easement, it was a three-foot right away that was created, so it was a long time, but probably, probably in the eighties. Because he required, started requiring fifty-footers in the nineties. So it had to be in the eighties.
Well, yeah, check with, with Jim.
Yep.
Find out.
Well, I'll write it up and then say, find a hole.
Yeah.
If this doesn't work. I'll send a copy to you too, if you can find a hole in it. We'll close this gap.
That'll work out well, and we should, we should be able to get this ready in a very short period of time.
I mean, you could, you could.
Then as soon, as soon as the selectmen say that there's gonna be a public hearing, or, or there's gonna be, yeah, as soon as you guys decide there's gonna be a public hearing on the, on the private way ordinance, we'll, with any luck.
There's no date on that right now.
No, but we'll be ready for it, cause we can, we can do this, we can hold the public hearing, and we can be ready, and send it up to you guys, so as soon as you set, set it in motion, you can drop it, drop it on the, the schedule, and we can have it at the same time.
We can do it by the second week in August.
Yeah.
Cause you've got, if you, if we have it ready for the next meeting and you guys approve it, then you set the public hearing, then I have two weeks to, to advertise it.
Yeah, so we, we could have this, we could have the public hearing before the end of August, and we'd be, we'd be in good shape. That depends on what happens at the next meeting, of course.
And also, we're not the triple, remember to publish it.
That's a, that's a whole other issue.
That's another issue.
What was the other one that you had, Roger? You had something?
It was about the use of hidden metals.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I, I think that's very clear in the, in the, in your approval motion.
Yeah.
Joe knows that, I've told him that multiple times.
Yeah.
And essentially, I also, Quay Frankridge Brokers, with Norman Abing, you know, a way of using that, that private road that he's going to build as a construction entrance, and Norman had no problem with that, and they came through Abernathy Road, in section four. But they, they don't want, they don't want construction equipment going through sections five and six. And, oh, well, if they can go around, well, they can't, this is a rural.
That is a, that is an emergency vehicle accident.
No one wants to see a truck unless it's bringing something, other than that, stay away. That's the nature of the beast.
That's exactly right.
And right now, the people that have bought into that place have complained about the construction traffic, truck traffic.
Just for the, just for the, like, the home construction traffic?
Basically.
Part, part of.
They could be there for another four or five years, they wanna use.
Yeah.
That back access for the eight months that they're open, so that people don't have to see those. That's a lot of trucks beating up that road.
Yeah.
That brings up all kinds of questions.
Says, you bought into something that was not complete and was under construction at the time.
It's a thrusty inconvenience on the people in the back, as opposed to them now.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Maybe we should discuss this much more at this rate.
We need to get the application.
If they make an official application, we don't want them to say we're prejudicial on this.
Again, there is a meeting coming up that was supposedly scheduled through the town hall, for the fifteenth at nine o'clock, at the town hall.
I don't know what to do with that one, we haven't been notified of it.
No, let, 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 let town hall deal with it, and, you know, the manager and, and the public board's director. I, I will be there, but I'm gonna just sit there and be quiet, see what happens.
The other thing is. The other thing is, along the way, if we remember correctly, there was the idea of even developing this emergency access, it was only done by force, not for their convenience. And now it's convenience.
So, okay. Is there anything else, any other business?
Yes.
Yes, Mark.
Uh, I mentioned to you.
You did.
Uh, that I had talked to Ted along the way, and with the, I'm gonna use my words, it may, may not be the correct words, the abortion of animal husbandry, I suggested that if it had to go to the state, okay, why don't we send it to the state, at least to get an idea of some of their input, either good, bad, or whatever else, or any other constructive criticism, so that it's not necessarily all directly in our hands, and from there, if we have to tweak it, or if they even come back, we at least have this amount of information from them.
Through the chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was unclear as to whether the ninety days requirement, if ninety days prior to the plan, this planning, we're having a public hearing, the proposed ordinance has to be sent to the Secretary of Agriculture in Augusta. I wasn't clear on whether there was any requirement for the Secretary of Agriculture to respond or to, to provide feedback to the, to the board. I, I think Mr. Kane's suggestion is a very good one of getting, getting input from the Secretary of Agriculture. I wondered if there, well, fir- first question is, in the formal process, if, if, if the planning board approves draft animal husbandry regulations, they have to be sent to the Secretary of Agriculture ninety days prior, then what? What happens, does the Secretary of Agriculture come to the public hearing? Does the Secretary of Agriculture say yea or nay on the, sort of, on, on intended? Uh, on, on the, on the proposal, or is it simply a filing requirement? But.
That's a really good question, cause I, I don't know the answer, I think if it's just a filing requirement, then we can send them the notice, but.
It, 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 what I read, it sounded like a filing requirement, however, regardless of what it is, I, of course, obviously, but I, I think Mr. Kane's suggestion of sending the dog's breakfast that we got churned up on the, the fifteenth, or whatever the date was, thirteenth, whatever the date was, sending that to Augusta to say, hey, you know, what, what do you think of this? We, we need to make some changes, but before we do, we'd like to get input from you.
And given that that was the rationale behind pulling it from the town meeting, I agree, I think we should send it. We may get nothing back from them, we may just hear crickets, I don't know.
Through the chair, if you want me to respond to that, and I've talked to Matt Randall up there, who's basically the compliance officer at Agriculture. And first thing he says is, yes, you will get a response back from the commissioner's office, probably not the commissioner, and that, that will be whether or not it complies with NAPA. And that's the concern, is that it complies with the NAPA Title VII, you know, the Right to Farm Act. And, and that the ninety days is, was, I said, really? We would no longer be legitimate if we didn't send it within ninety days? And he said, well, that's kinda like to get people moving a little bit, you know, like, I have a feeling that ninety days is fluid.
Soft.
Yeah, it's very soft. I think more, more than anything else, they just wanna make sure that there's no overt violation of MAPAs. But I think it's, it's a good idea, I just don't wanna flood. But I think it's, it's a good idea, I just don't wanna flood them with several, several iterations that'll be sent up for their consideration. We can send it and see if there's any NAPA problems there. Um, and right now, and, and then with, with the provisor, I could tell NAPA, you know, look, you know, we're gonna probably make some changes here. Given some of the responses we've got, but, uh, please, please view this and see whether or not we have a NAPA violation.
Using those as your resources.
May I make one other comment to, to the court?
Yeah.
On the subject of animal husbandry, I would very strongly encourage involving members of, representatives of the Farm Bureau. In, in, in addition to the Federal Department of Agriculture. As well as local, local farmers would probably could decide just-
I, I think that's always really great, I think we heard about a couple, uh, tonight that, that have horses in it. It would be good to get feedback from all of these people.
But those are recreational horses, I don't think they're breeding, I don't think they're doing it for commercial gain.
Not everything that we-
For idealized-
Well, the reason we got shot down had nothing to do with what the ordinance said, 'cause we weren't talking about commercial-
We got shot down through, through that act though. We didn't fly with the skies.
But, uh-
Uh, through, I have a question to the chair.
Yes, Marty.
Uh, you may be able to get us the answer. In the past, when any changes have always been brought forth by the planning board and anything else along the way, usually, there is a publication by the selectman, we approve, we don't approve, or anything else. This time, all our suggestions or whatever else on that we had worked on was left out hanging by us.
Uh, I, I researched that for you and I went back through several, quite a few, uh, town, town books and the selectmen have not taken stance on, on something we're gonna sort of, um, proposals in the past.
Yes, they have.
They may have, but I haven't said this. They have, they have in the last ten years, I went back ten years and looking at town reports.
Sure.
Yes, Chip.
They can always change their practices.
They could. But I think that's an issue that we need, if, if, if we want that feedback from the board of selectmen, yes, Phil, Phil is here, but I think we should go to the board of selectmen and say, we like you, this is one way or the other, say yes or no.
I think, I think from now on, so, a- anything that goes up for changes, I want, uh, a comment from the selectmen, because, uh, what are we just spinning the wheels for there?
Well, that, that's just a suggestion that there, we should-
I'm just throwing it out for the future.
Production with, with Comey.
Cooperation and courtesy and, but, it's a two-way street.
We would, we would like to see that, but again, I think that's an issue of we go to, we, we go to the selectmen at one of their meetings and when it is appropriate and they're going to be doing something from the town want, for example, with the, with the private ways and, and with this change that we're looking at, and ask them to indicate on the, on, in the town book, do you approve or disapprove? Do you support or not?
If it's, if it's public size of the town book.
Yeah.
For a special meeting, we don't have a town book. I mean, I'm just saying.
But they can still make a-
Right.
They can still indicate whether or not they approve, there's a warrant out there and on the warrant, they can say whether or not they approve.
We can do the same also.
Through the chair, I mean?
Yes.
You know, I, I think, looking back and looking at this, this was intentional, that the selectmen don't make comments on it. And I don't think it's because they don't take stands, uh, from what I can see, it's because they don't wanna intrude upon planning board's recommendations and said, that's their province and we don't want to step on their toes and the planning board making recommendations on the budget, saying, no. Planning board approve the budget? No.
And that's, that's a good point I hadn't thought of.
Sort of like a respect thing, I, I see this as respect thing, from what, from I've seen in the past.
If, if that's the situation, then-
I don't know.
The selectmen can simply say, no, we, we don't.
I think the selectmen made no recommendation to let the town voters make up their own mind and not induce some kind of a sway-
Yeah.
On the vote.
And that, that's a valid argument for, for not, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that, but yeah, that's-
My memory serves me right, that's the way it went.
And there's nothing wrong with that. Is there anything else?
We skipped over the new, the item that was put in front of other business.
Before we do, if I may, Mr. Vice Chair, I do have a couple of things to bring up.
So we're gonna stay with other business?
Yeah, I would say, I would say that makes sense.
Okay, I have two, just two things, I'll make it very quick. One is we have a new planning board member, I think, sent you an email on that, Sue Roth was appointed by the selectman on Monday night.
Her last name is?
Roth.
R O T H?
Yes.
As in Philip?
Yes, I have no relation, I don't know. Apparently she's, well, she's from New York.
Could be.
So still. But in any case, uh, as she has turned aboard, she was unable to come tonight, but she has indicated she will be at the next planning board meeting. And she has a rather impressive resume and I think it'll be, uh, a very, uh, we won't miss Chip, but she, it sounds like she, uh, is a, uh, a very suitable addition to the board. That's number one and number two, well, looking down the barrel, seven new applications for the next meeting.
You're looking what?
Seven applications for the next meeting.
What type of, uh?
Everything. No subdivision, I don't have a subdivision yet, that's coming. But I've got seven applications.
Okay, I'm gonna hang you up to dry.
You're gonna be on-
Four years not gonna be.
That's, that's August ninth.
Probably Tom won't be either.
If, um, does anybody notice, is Tom on vacation?
All right, let's put it this way, he has stated before that he was going to California prior to this. But the fact is, this is typical. So, uh, but everybody's entitled to life.
Vacation time.
Or family time.
Absolutely, okay.
But I mean, he did say that-
You're right, he did mention some of the California.
Yeah.
So I mean, uh, I'm just mentioning that is, uh, but his email is only going to the college.
Yes.
It doesn't turn out as, the only thing I could suggest is you have his other-
Yeah, I do have a cell phone, but he did respond to me tonight when I called, he did the quorum call, he responded by email, so let's check his email.
I'm not trying to throw it-
Okay. Anything else?
I have nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Like a motion?
No.
Well, no, the next issue on the agenda is that we need to elect a secretary.
I nominate Jens Borgen for secretary.
Would you?
Would you? Would you take the job?
No, I'd be happy.
Okay, I need a second.
Yay.
A motion has been made in seconds.
As the wages disappeared from the month of June, wasn't it?
Are there any other motions, any other nominations?
We should have a, an assistant secretary, 'cause I'm gonna disappear again for the month of September.
Yeah, we have one.
All right, we do, okay.
Marty.
All right, I can't, you can't read my writing, I'm lucky I can't do, uh-
Yeah, it, it, it just involves sidewalks, we just-
Well, uh, let's put it this way, my-
And, and of course, if, if we have, like, when we're doing whole zones and I have to notify everybody in the, in the entire district, call the secretary and ask him for help. Usually I'll get a return call.
Oh boy, I've got, I've got, I've got a couple of very able assistants at the office and they can read my press ratings and that makes it easy.
Outsource it. Has been made and seconded for Jens to be the secretary for the planning board, all those in favor?
All right.
Any abstentions, Jens?
One.
We've had a, we've had a record tonight, it's four one on everything.
Uh, what kind of goodies that, any insight to us, the possibilities of coming up seven applicants?
Um, everything, we have two, we have, we have two zone change requests and not, not entirely larger. I have two zone change, I will tell you, one is Motorland. It's been six months, come on, we have to have an application.
It hasn't been six months though, has it?
It's been less than six months.
By the time they get here, it'll be six months.
No, they have a very thorough application, they're asking to be, uh, uh, for museums to be included in the BI history.
How did they ever know that?
I know it. Isn't it just shocking, you're crystal ball, I was gonna say.
Gentlemen, you're gonna have to make a decision on that, so let's not show any-
I, I made a comment, I didn't say yes or no.
If you're on camera, you wanna be caught being biased.
I'm not, they've already accused me of being biased.
Uh, I have, um, our, uh, a capable canine in its bag, she's got a complete application.
She's the lady on one of them?
One eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
I was wondering about that.
Sorry, Jamie, I told her that you were looking for and she said, I wasn't ready. She has received her, her license from the state.
Oh, really?
The original license from the state's done, she's done her homework, so I have that. Jesus, I'm just, I'm drawing a blank, I shouldn't have done all what they were, but, uh, oh, uh, Bill Stoffen has completed his, so.
Okay.
So he'll be back in a jiffy. And I have, uh, a, uh, I have a private way extension that goes into, goes over ten lots, so. I've informed them of what's happening, you know, with this, but they want to proceed, they don't wanna wait.
They have the ten lots already?
They will have ten lots at the end of this.
Oh, okay.
It's already on a paved road, so they wanna continue the pavement anyways.
Okay.
It's also a short, I thought, should be interesting. It's a family division. Okay? Um, and, uh, there is, there are two more, I can't remember the title, I have the number of that, but it's, I counted them seven, I'll get cleaning zone changes.
Okay.
Cool.
Question?
Yes.
Uh, when we've asked and asked for something in writing, I would appreciate it to be either, done not just verbally, because guess what? It's not fair to the applicant and it's not fair to us, because the fact is, we don't have any per se, anything on record.
But that's, that's an issue.
No.
No, no, it's, it's an issue with the fire chief, 'cause he doesn't wanna do it.
Well, I'm sorry, then, then we'll, then if the applicant is not complete, then, that's simple and plain.
Well-
Well, the applicant chose to do the other methodology.
Yeah, it, it is-
But you're right, Marty, I mean, we're supposed to get a comment on that issue.
Something written, so we have it for the record. I mean, we've, how many times have we chased?
Well, the, the selectmen are, are looking to hire a new chief, so maybe we will get lucky.
I'm not trying to-
Pay attention.
I've-
Written into the job description.
No, you're right, I mean, we ask all the time and we can't get anything.
We have gotten in the past, to be fair, we have.
Not all the time.
We've had to chase him down to get it.
Or turn out, uh, yes or no, I mean, turn out nothing else, I mean, uh,
Some people don't always-
Particularly when they were, when they were pushing for the, the sprinkler system, the way, uh, or anything else, he was vocal then.
Okay.
So, no.
Anything else?
We'll take a motion when you adjourn.
Second.
I guess they'd be unanimous this time, there'll be no abstaining.
No, gentlemen.
Good night.
Thank you.